Welcome to our regular meeting of council in prison and live streamed electronically Tuesday, October 3, 2023 at 6:00 PM. A reminder of our Thanksgiving weekend, please drive safe and enjoy the long weekend. Also trivia night at Rosedale Hall, October 13th. Reserve your spot. Our land acknowledgement, the council and staff of the township of Montague acknowledged that this sacred land on which the township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Oronkun Anishapi Nation. I'll ask for a moment of silence please. Thank you. So moved by councillor Avast and seconded by councillor Craftry that the regular meeting of council agenda dated October 3, 2023. We approved as amended this date move items A, B, C, H, J from information to action. All in favor? Not carried. This time a disclosure of interest to her at any point in time during our meeting. But moved by councillor Craftry and seconded by councillor Kenny that the minutes of the regular meeting of council September 19, 2023 be approved as presented. All in favor? Not carried. New business arising from our previous minutes? Okay, so now our delegation is the Rita Valley Conservation Authority with Summer. They're to discuss watershed programs and services.
Good evening. No can you speak quietly and soothingly? So thank you very much. My name's Summer Pasgrain Robertson, general manager of the Rita Valley Conservation Authority. And I'm just going to take a few minutes tonight just to talk about some of the programs and services that we deliver. But of course, the main reason I'm here this evening is we have a new agreement requirement that we have to solicit from all of our member municipalities. So just to orient yourself, Montague is kind of right in the the middle or the heart of the watershed, which is lovely. Certainly agricultural country in between kind of the urban and and upper watershed that's dominated by lakes. So the province has made a number of changes to our legislation. One of the main changes is categorizing our programs into three categories. So the first one is what we call mandatory programs. These are programs that all conservation authorities have to deliver and they're mandated by the province. So for us, that includes our flood forecasting and warning programs. So in the spring, as we head into flood conditions, you'll often see messages from the conservation authority to inform municipalities and residents to take the necessary precautions. We also play a role as we head into low water or drought conditions as well. We certainly have water erosion control infrastructure, not to the same extent as other municipality or other conservation authorities, but we do have smaller dams and weirs. We do natural hazard mapping. So this would be mapping areas in the watershed that's prone to flooding or prone to slope stability issues. We also map watercourses. We then use that mapping to provide comments to municipalities when you circulate, so your planning applications, we comment on those natural hazards. We also have our own regulations. So people require a permit from the conservation authority for development that alters a water course is adjacent to a wetland or is in an area that's prone to flooding or slope stability concerns. Our conservation areas and the land that we manage also falls into the provincially mandated category, which is good. So we have 11 conservation areas that are open to the public. Hopefully got a chance to come out and and visit them. Typically, they have parking lots and trails and other amenities to get the public out enjoying nature. We also do, we deliver a very small provincial monitoring program that looks at groundwater and surface water. But there's a total of about six sites in our watershed. So it's a very minimal program. And then we deliver, of course, the drinking water source protection program on behalf of the province. And that is focused on municipal drinking water systems. So the second category of programs that we have are really programs and services that we deliver on behalf of municipalities. So for us, we do septic approvals or septic re inspections on behalf of some municipalities. We also implement source protection policies on behalf of some of our member municipalities. We do have certain agreements with municipalities to operate or maintain some of their properties or municipal infrastructure. And this is often when their properties or sites may be close to some of ours. So just to be efficient, if our staff are already heading out to that area, we'll have some reciprocal agreements. And sometimes it includes forest or land management. And the third category is really the reason that I'm here tonight. This is all other programs and services that we deliver on behalf of the watershed. So they're not at the request of municipalities or mandated by the province. These are programs that have been designed and implemented over a number of decades to address the characteristics or the need of our individual watershed. And these programs can vary quite a bit between conservation authorities. So for us, it includes all of our private land stewardship programs, also our watershed monitoring recording programs and our outdoor education programs that we deliver at Baxter and Foley Mountain Conservation Areas. So the change in our legislation is that starting January 1 of 2024, we need agreements from all of our member municipalities in order to use any of the municipal levy that we collect from you to go towards category three programs. So we have to continue delivering category one and two. But any levy support that goes towards category three programs needs a written agreement. So this is a new requirement. So we don't have any municipal levy at the moment going to our outdoor education programs. So for us, the agreement tonight is just focused on our private land stewardship and our monitoring and reporting programs. So just a slide on our private land stewardship with three main programs under that umbrella. One is our tree planting program. It's been up and running since 1984. We've planted over 7 million trees. And I was looking at the stats and Montague is actually the municipality that's planted the third most trees out of all of our 1800 municipalities. So it's a program that your landowners have really been able to make great use of. And since the program started, we're getting close to almost 500,000 trees being planted in Montague. So really impressive numbers when you compare that to all of our other municipalities. Our rural clean water program is a program designed to support farmers and rural residents. So we funded over 2,000 projects since that program started in 1992. And again, this is also a program that Montague residents have been able to make good use of. So over 70 projects have been funded in your municipality and almost $135,000 in grants have been given to rural residents in Montague alone. And then the third program is shoreline naturalization. We've planted over 800 shorelines since that program started in 2009. It's targeted mostly around lakes and rivers, so a little bit more popular in the upper watershed. But there have been seven shorelines that have been planted in Montague. The second program under this umbrella is our water monitoring, recording and restoration program. So this includes water quality monitoring on lakes and rivers, looking at water chemistry, so taking samples, bringing it to a lab, looking at a variety of parameters, but also looking at the types of inverberates that are at the base of the water course, which is a good indicator of water quality. And we also look at stream conditions, so temperature, condition of the shoreline, is it natural, is it hardened? And some of the natural features within the channel itself, and also look at headwater drainage features. And there is a component of this program that's a little bit more focused on community outreach. So we do some garbage cleanups with community volunteers. We do a little bit of invasive species removal. And from time to time, we do fish habitation, we do creation and wetland restoration projects. So in terms of the agreement itself, we have drafted the same agreement for all 18 of our municipalities. We've actually used a similar template across Eastern Ontario. So the five Eastern CA's are using very similar agreements. The agreement essentially sets a maximum of the amount of our annual levy that we can use towards the category three programs. So for us, based on prior costs of the programs, we're seeing that every year when we collect municipal levy from you, 80% of it goes to category one, so those provincially required programs. And we're asking to be able to spend no more than 20% on the category three programs. The initial agreement has a five-year term. There's a required five-year review at that point. And if both parties are satisfied, there's a renewal clause. And of course, for any reason, we put in a six-month early termination clause. So at any point, if the council no longer wants to support the programs or for some reason we can't deliver them, there is that early termination clause for both parties. And just a final slide, we looked, this gives you a sense of every year, the way that our levy is apportioned. So it's based on assessment value and this is data that we get from the province that we're required to use to apportion our levy. So you can see Ottawa is certainly our significant rate payer. Montague pays 0.38% of our levies. So when you look at the cost of what that 20% of the levy is in last year, using that budget for category three, essentially we're estimating Montague's cost to be just under $5,000 in 2024. And that would just be a category three or that 20% amount. So I know I've breezed through rather quick. More than happy to answer questions and I've also brought copies of our annual report, which I'll leave. Feel free to keep one home or if you want to pass some of the residents, welcome the opportunity to have them in the front office.
Thanks for that, the creative overview too as well. Information about some of the changes that obviously the policy has put down as far as that breaks down. So for the category two side of the world, it's that's really only ones that are that are paid indirectly. So none of this will have been going to that that category whatsoever.
Exactly. It may vary with other conservation authorities, but for us, they're exclusively paid for like fee for service. So either the proponents, in the case of say the subject reinspection program, it's landowners that are paid, or if it's a program that the municipality is funding, they pay directly. So you're right, no levy to category.
Okay, and I guess going forward, this tells us that we're getting the budget time now. Is there, is there a plan for the conversation right now to say sort of an estimated amount? That won't be a drastic change, but we know what sort of percentage is being looked at as far as.
Yeah, so we're early days. We went to our board just last week for preliminary budget direction so staff can start drafting an initial draft. Last year, our budget direction was two and a half percent as a levy increase plus assessment growth. City of Ottawa certainly gave us the same direction for this year. We kind of polled the board to see what local councils were also doing. So I would think we'll probably be in a similar window. We don't go higher than that. So I would say at the most, two and a half percent increase plus.
And that would, you think that would cover all of the the needs that or the services and programs and staff thing and everything else that RVCA has right now?
Yeah, I think so. So that's kind of been our budget direction for a number of years now and every year it's kind of panned out. When I took over 10 years ago, the budget was a little tight and we would have needed larger increases. So we kind of tightened the belt, restructured, eliminated a couple of positions just to bring the budget back in line with budget direction that we were getting from municipalities. So since then, over the last 10 years, I've been able to keep the levy increase at two to two and a half percent plus growth. And that's kind of my goal is to just, you know, slow and steady. I don't want the big peaks where a CA has to come out and make a big correction and we had a little five or six percent increase one year. So we just try to kind of maintain that, keep in peace with inflation.
And I guess, and I think that that's big because it helps us sort of manage that too as well, understand it as well. And maybe there's a lot of pressure to as well as far as how this growth and holding growth and everything else. And so how does, how does that sort of play in RVCA? Feeling with that, I guess, is that's.
Yeah, COVID. How the staff thought to the workload, I'm not sure. The two years of COVID permit numbers were through the roof. We saw it on the septic side, our permit planning comments. Workload was, we've never seen it that high. We kept our staffing compliment the same. So it was a lot of pressure on staff. We did pull some people internally, reallocated some work just to to try to keep on top of it. This year, the numbers are, I would say, more back to normal, which is a little bit of relief for us because it was hard to sustain that volume. So we were banking on it being short term, so we didn't change our resource levels and just dealt with it internally with reallocations. So now they can kind of recalibrate and and get back to normal. So I think with development levels, what we're seeing so far this year, that's a pretty manageable level for us.
And if we, if we see like sort of a continued growth, I think it's one of the biggest things that's coming out of the bill too as well is is the the abilities, not the ability, but we second look at, in terms of where that work, like where the studies being put in and then RVCA's, some like, and engineers putting it in, then it's being looked at again, peer review, second that's what I'm going to get to.
Yes.
Like right now, is that a lot of, is obviously a lot of that peer review?
It depends on the type of submission. So typically, it's only if there's substantive technical reports as part of the submission. So we get a lot of smaller scale developments, so alteration to water courses. If it's an individual landowner, maybe a shed in addition. If it's just architectural drawings, then it's typically just our regulation staff and planning staff that are looking at it. It's not until you get into, say, subdivisions or development with stormwater or something of a more technical nature that we then have to bump the application or the planning application to our technical staff, so our engineers or a biologist. So it's certainly not every application that has peer review. It just depends on the nature of the technical work.
Thank you for questions.
I love questions.
Summer. Can you hear me still? I'm loud enough. So Summer, is it, is it going to the city of Ottawa on the 12th of October for approval?
Yes, so currently it's going to their agricultural and rural affairs committee on Thursday. And so then it'll go to council, I believe, on October 12th. So by the 13th, we should know it has through the city of Ottawa. Obviously, as you can tell, that's kind of a make a great decision for us. But there's, you know, we can simply let municipalities know on the 13th what decision makes mean. Early indications are positive, so.
And I think maybe just to clarify that if Ottawa doesn't pass it, it doesn't change like our others.
Yes. Yeah, so the way that we've written the agreement, it caps it at 20% and we've shown you the apportionment. So for whatever reason, if Iowa didn't support it, with this agreement, we would never reallocate that to the other 17 municipalities. We would have to come, well, we would have to even figure out if we could deliver the program without Ottawa's portion, which I would say would be unlikely. But we would have to take stock of what we could do with the budget that's left and then we would come out to municipalities with a new agreement. We have to change what we're promising to deliver and for what amount. So it would essentially void the agreement.
So for us, I think my recommendation this evening is that we'll wait to bring an agreement until we hear back from the city of Ottawa for simplicity sake for all of us. It's just, it'll be presented later on at the whole, but that is the recommendation was, or from me as staff, is that once we hear on the 13th, then I'll follow up.
Yeah, that's no problem from our perspective. I've got you and someone else on my list to to send an email on the 13th. So it's no problem. We have till the end of the year to get the agreements done. So as long as it comes through council before then, it's perfect for us.
Now on to our reports committee. So moved by councillor Kenny and seconded by deputy Reed Carroll that council approved the minutes of the whole meeting of September 19, 2023, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Not carried. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll and seconded by councillor Avast that council accept the American Library Board minutes from August 2023 information. All in favor? That's given. Moved by councillor Avast and seconded by councillor Craftry that council accept the Smith Falls Library Board minutes from May 2023's information. All in favor? Not carried. Moved by councillor Craftry and seconded by councillor Penny that council accept the Smith Falls Library Board minutes from June 2023 as information. All in favor? Not carried. Moved by councillor Kenny and seconded by deputy Reed Carroll that council approved the minutes of Montague Recreation and Cultural Committee meeting of August 24, 2023, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Not carried. Positions, bylaws, motion. So now we're going on to action items. First one is our county media release, January 20, 2023.
I always bring those, I always bring those up. Thanks, thank you Chair. I mean, roll quick and then read spread them. It was nice out there and then she stopped by and kind of talked about congratulating council on, we were the first ones to declare it a pandemic and and it kind of has really spiraled positively out of control. She was even brought down to Toronto to be able to do that down there and everything else for the Toronto's council. I think it just kind of needs, you know, a David that even the first, but also that, you know, it's good that it's continually being put out there too as well. Because it's something we always want to continue to talk about. So and everything else, I think anybody can can kind of read in there. I think the county has been pretty quiet, I would say, the last couple of meetings, but we're starting to ramp up with some bigger stuff that I think we can report back to council with. And what what's more pertinent information like we've had earlier in the year. So thanks.
Big brothers, big sisters, Honor County 15th anniversary gala invitation.
Yeah, I brought that up just real quick. Once again, I don't, we post that on our our socials too as well, just to make sure it's out there. It's nice to know it's one of the big ones that we we support, obviously, in Montague. And I got a test they do a lot, especially in our school systems and and membership programs and after school programs and and everything else. And they they do do a lot. And we do have a good assortment of Montague children that do attend some of their programs too as well. So I think it's, you know, they're they're very positive. So if people want to go to their gallery, want to at least put it out there, that people want to donate to it, that's great.
So this ministry of municipal affairs and housing, better responding to housing affordability task force recommend the.
This one's big. Sorry, I guess. So this one's big, but I think I think the biggest thing is that I'm I'm curious from council too as well. So I've gone through and I've highlighted a lot of stuff, but I shared it with Kirsten. I know she has sort of asked for sort of feedback about about what the next steps would be. I shared with her some of my top eight and she shared back sort of her top and was, you know, a lot of our sort of intermingled, which I think is fantastic, like requiring her preconsulate consultation, simplifying the planning document, there's the planning legislation. The other one about the digitization too as well, I think we agreed on. There's a couple that we, I think I picked, and maybe she she picked differently. The Ontario government should establish a large Ontario housing fund to encourage fellow government to match funding. Anyway, so I have those eight down there and I I don't know if council wants to kind of like really hash those out or even hash them out tonight. But I would put a proposal out there if if councils, well, I just, if Kirsten and I sort of finish that top five list, I mean, sort of send that from council off. If there's feedback from other council members, I mean, we'll obviously want to hear it, we want to take it. And if there's something that, if you do see stuff on there, you say, yeah, this is like ones we want on there. I mean, we're, that's pretty good that it's also something that we're we we're thinking of. So I'm going to throw that out there. If we have that list, there's something we want to submit. If council's okay with Kirsten and I maybe sort of finishing up that top five list and sending it off.
So I do have a recommended motion for council to choose the top five, but if council wants to direct the deputy Reed and junior planner to come up with that, that's fine as well. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page because they want it back before October 16.
Yeah, so I I've seen Jeff's as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I'll share the email. Sorry, I should say that to us all, like the emails that we had, like we I'll share the rest of the council too, to make sure that I should, we should probably should have done that. I mean, we'll do it anyways. So we'll share those those emails that we shared back and forth. And if you give us some comments and then personally I can do that if you guys are interested, everybody's.
I think the simplifying, we we were actually talking about that a long time ago. If there's a way to simplify things, so we're not going through everything, it would be a lot cheaper and a lot more cost effective because we were talking about that through even just do not here in council.
Yeah.
If you have a one-stop shop where it kind of made things a lot easier, it'd be a lot more cost effective. So it's great that you brought it up and are reiterating it and hopefully somebody takes it.
I mean, the problems has gotten some things already, like out of the, all of the recommendations right here, they've started the protest, but we want to make sure, like there's some of the, like the preconcentration, what I think we we most strongly think is that is a big, a big point that will be beneficial to the planning process. And that spirals into, we're talking about the county too as well, about really digitizing things a little bit a lot more. And that's one of one of our like action plans on that, because there's that KPMG study that we did for for planning. And I've been really pushing, obviously, the the digitization side of it. And I think obviously the rest of the county councils is game to that too as well. And once again, I think that all kind of ties into it too.
So moved by deputy Reed Carroll and seconded by councillor Avast that council directed deputy Reed and junior planner to establish the township of Montague's top five housing affordability task force, force recommendations for response to the ministry of municipal affairs and housing. All in favor? Not carried. Next one will be our 2022 FIPR award.
I brought it up last and decided I remember having it there.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I had received the email as well, so wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. So the ministry has 15 top winners for filing the annual financial information returns of all the municipalities in in Ontario. And thanks to Ally and staff, Montague has obtained one of the top 15 positions, which is very exciting. So I wanted to make sure that our residents were aware of just how well our staff have been working and how efficient they are in getting and meeting that top 15 deadline. So that is excellent. So congratulations to Ally and staff.
We, so we had, because we had shared that when you sent the email, I made sure we did share it that night for sure, because that was, when you said that was, that was exciting. So just, we'll just put another feather out there about however it is great. So it's, that sounds great.
It is. It's a, it's fabulous that we can obtain that. It's tough competition, but for a small municipality, it's harder because we've got less staff. Though that just shows how hard staff are working and this is fabulous. So thank you. And then on our council assigned tasks for October of 2023, there's something there. I hope this is important.
So I brought this forward for, so this comes to council on a regular basis and information and we update you on kind of where we're standing with everything. There's a couple of items that are from previous years that we are still working on as staff has changed over. The one though that I would like to kind of discuss this evening is from 2022. There was a direction for staff to bring forward a resolution to encourage the council, this current council, move forward to supporting moving to one bag in 2025. The reason why I'm bringing it forward now is that we still daily have residents coming in looking for their orange garbage tags. So even though we've communicated it out as much as possible, and now with the lack of a local newspaper, moving to the one bag, we feel that there should be, if this council is interested still in that, that we need to bring a report forward with a communication plan that may be like a year or two years in the works, to be honest, to make sure that people understand. Just because transitioning from the orange tags to no tags has been almost a year, year and a half since the communication has started. So we want to make sure that we're well ahead of everything, which would put us potentially into like a 2026 transition. And then depending on when in 2026, there could also be lame duck if people aren't ready for council and things like that. So I guess for us, we just wanted a direction of, could we feel that there should be a communication plan and time for residents to prepare for going to the one bag? I know that some residents make comments all the time that they only put one bag out every week, but we have others that put several and buy tags, additional tags. So we just feel that, I know in our strategic plan, communication is a big aspect. So with it taking so long with the green, with the orange tags, we'd like to get moving on this if this is a direction of this current council. Because I was, the previous council was directing this council to kind of move forward in supporting one. um, to kind of move forward in supporting one bag. So we're just looking on direction of, do you want a report to come back, um, in relation to this in a timely manner so we can get this address that may not be twenty twenty five, it may be twenty twenty six, just based on the communication strategies? Um, or are we just leaving it on action tracking?
I think, because exactly, if it's going to take a while to get communication done, then we probably can start moving on it. Because definitely it was part of the the plan of previous council that we moved from stickers to just two bags with the ultimate goal of coming down to one bag.
But this council hasn't said we're in bag.
Not yet.
So my question to the all councils. I, I have a really good reason why I think you guys didn't. Why didn't we push it through?
Back then, why didn't we go straight to one?
No, why didn't we make a recommendation due to three years from now? I don't understand. Sorry. She says it the time, it's a time stamp at that point, right? So to go from two to eventually transition to one, it takes time. So my question is, why did you defer it to this council instead of bring it through at that point? Because I have a really good reason why I think you guys didn't. But I'm asking you.
I personally didn't think of it as to why we didn't put a specific date. Because I mean, that's the thing is ultimately you want to get down to that one bag. Because it is, we are paying by that tonnage. So you want to ensure that everybody are doing the recycling and the composting and as best we can. And that's why you move in your stages. And I guess maybe getting some additional data now to see how things are going with our, our tonnages would be helpful as well.
Sorry, can I just speak? So this isn't meant for us to debate going one bag, uh, this evening. It was just is council in agreement that yes, we should bring back a wholesome report to have those full discussions on our communication plan and those things. I just, we don't want to leave it sitting on action tracking and then in twenty twenty four, late twenty twenty four, say, oh, uh, we're going to work one day. We want to just make sure that we have that wholesome discussion. Um, so it's not that we're asking us to this evening to say why or what. We'll bring that all in a report with options. Um, I just, we're just looking to say, if there is some interest or interest in that report coming back, we want to get that back to you as soon as possible to give us that time. That's it.
That's just our report.
Yeah, because I think, I think it'd be, I think it'd be good for this council to have that discussion to see if it's something we should be doing or not and, and getting numbers from Steve as far as what that looks like for his weight and cost and everything else. I can read the spot right now, man. Uh, but I mean, like it's a, uh, but I think, I think that'd be a, a, a a good part of that discussion and see, I mean, a lot of it was like trying to push it towards, uh, what's the recycling program going to look like? We're also looking at the, the, um, where the, the vendors are taking over the recycling program too as well. So like, was that going to change it in a, like, better in order to help remove some of that? Was it also going to reduce some of the, the waste too as well? I think there's a lot of that discussion, so it's.
I think we should look at incentives to, to getting, uh, reducing the, the, the garbage input. And it allows, I, but I also want to hear from Steve, what he thinks it's going to look like on, uh, a garbage in Montague sense, uh, i- if we would implement this in, in a year and a half from now, are we spending a lot of money cleaning up the roads? Are we cleaning, cleaning up dishes? Because I got, we're right now have two bags and I can tell you down, um, McLaughlin, down Carol, there's a lot of garbage that just gets thrown right in the ditch. So because they don't want to pay the three dollars to get those tags. So I, I would definitely like to hear what Steve's in front of that too.
Just on to your story and I was actually on waste discount information, uh, the year to date for the third quarter, which you'll see on the next report. Uh, and from last year's third quarter was within point zero 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 one percent um, from one year ago. So one year was that close. Um, and when it comes to roadside dumping, it is very, very hard to base any data off roadside dumping, because how do we determine that that is Montague residents dumping that loss?
So with that, we'll bring back almost like a swath, where our strengths, we can, this opportunities, threats, um, all those are perfect. It's just, we want to make sure that this is an interest because it's going to take some, it's going to take us to bring a substantial report that's going to give you something to discuss. It's going to take, take some time. Um, but we also want to be ahead of that curve and that communications side of thing if we're going to transition at all. So we, we know it's going to be a big discussion and that there's lots of information to come forward, uh, because we do have to look at a number of of things. Um, the capacity of waste sites are getting limited. Um, you know, there's all kinds of impacts. We actually don't have a waste site here. So if our contractor no longer offers that service, what does that look like as far as hauling and all those types of things? So we'll bring back lots of information for discussion. We just want to make sure that there's interest, um, in us bringing that report, uh, to council to have that discussion.
We had a very wholesome discussion about garbage in the last third term of council, so let's have another wholesome discussion about garbage in this.
So move by councillor Vass and second by councillor Crabtree, that council directs staff to bring a report on options to move into one garbage bag per week, as per the recommendation and resolution passed by the previous council. All in favor? Well, there's no unfinished business, no other business. So any questions from our audience? That goes online. Then move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Kenny, that bylaw four zero one five dash twenty twenty three, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty three, be read for a second and third time and pass signed and sealed this third day of October twenty twenty three. All in favor? The move by councillor Kenny and second by deputy brief Carroll, that council adjourned the regular meeting of October third, twenty twenty three at six thirty eight P M until October seventeenth, twenty twenty three at six P M or at the call of the chair. All in favor?
You're going to go?
Welcome back, everybody, to our committee of the whole meeting. Uh, we're going to open a meeting with our land acknowledgement that the council and staff, the township Montague acknowledge that the sacred land in which the township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held because it's a real and seated territory of the Algonquin and Shabi Nation. The option of the agenda. So we have a group by Hilser of Vass and seconded by Hilser Crabtree, the beauty of the whole agenda dated, uh, October third, twenty twenty three, be approved as amended to include or revise me against travel award reports.
I can just think of that quickly. So, um, the one costing, the just the two numbers were inverted, the four and the one. So it's correct on the one that's now touched here.
Yeah, the updated. Firstly, we don't have any delegations. Are there, maybe if you just go, if you're just doing, uh, now or you're under the meeting, delegations, we don't have any, but our first report of, 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 and Kirsten about our township owned properties, education section.
Good evening, council. Um, so the report that you have before you this evening stems from correspondence that was received in early September from GovDeals, um, which, uh, for the public's information is a, is an online auction service, um, that helps uh, governments sell surplus assets. And, uh, one of the comments made within that correspondence was that township owned properties that aren't being used are a cost to the municipality. Uh, revenue isn't being generated from those properties and that lost revenue can be utilized to address shortfalls. So, um, council passed a resolution that evening directing staff to look at township owned properties and, uh, to investigate what their potential would be. So staff have reviewed impact records. There are twenty one township owned properties in Montague. And attached to the report is, um, a spreadsheet, uh, breaking down those twenty one properties into different categories, um, some of them being developable, some of them being ones that we're currently using that are, are not, uh, conveyable. Uh, some, and also with some suggestions from staff as to what those lands could be used for. So of those twenty one properties, five are being used by the township, uh, ten are not capable of being developed on their own. Uh, this could be because they don't have um, uh, road frontage, open road frontage. They could be, uh, covered by wetlands. They could have a lot configuration that would be too small to support development. Uh, but they could potentially be conveyed to an adjacent landholder to increase their land holdings. Um, although some of those properties again, wouldn't be able to be developed um, specifically if they were, um, mostly comprised of provincially significant wetlands. Three of those properties do have the potential for development. But it would be dependent on what development was being proposed, um, as to what studies might be required to support that development. And for example, you could have a lot that has, um, woodlands or wetlands and it might require an E I S. Um, or it might be in a location that might require a hydroge. Uh, three of those lots are not developable, um, but could potentially be used as a parker, green space. So I will open up to council questions and I'll do my best to answer them and it, and I might not have the answer tonight, but I can definitely bring answers back for questions.
Thank you, Kirsten. I think, uh, it's, it's good for all of us to be aware of, of what the, the owned properties right there. And obviously some of them, when they, when they're landlocked and everything else, it's you know, we're, we're kind of stuck. But I mean, uh, but I'll definitely open up the council. Is there any questions or comments or thoughts as far as some of that land at all? Okay, so I, I guess, I guess, yes, for sure. Anyway.
How do we find tech home and use like random land properties?
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that in some cases they could result from a tax sale, non-payment of taxes and then the township ends up with it because the landowner, it, it's of no significant use to them. Perhaps they got it through an estate or family and it's just been conveyed and passed along, but it's of no value to anyone. And so we end up with it.
You just, okay. Middle of the nowhere.
In most cases, we didn't want them. So yes, yes.
University. So have we ever approached in some of these cases where adjacent landowners might be interested? There's been no communication in the past, though, to see, but
I don't know, we would have to check record, but, um, there are some of these properties that people have come to the office, uh, most recently. Um, our property that is on Bean Street and is waterfront, somebody wants that property. Um, that's one of those ones. But again, it's ultimately up to council, but I I don't think we would recommend selling off, uh, a property that we own that is along the waterfront. Um, again, it's the last one in the, uh, listing there that's green that Kirsten had, that could be potential park space or green space. Um, but I mean, ultimately it's up to council. Uh, that's the only one that I'm aware of surviving here that somebody has come in and actually asked about. Um, but I mean, if council would like us to reach out to property owners as far as the ones that are landlocked, um, because we have some signi- significant acreage on some of these that aren't developable, but maybe the neighbor would add it to their portfolio.
And then what happens? Like, do they buy it off of us?
It would have to be assessed.
And then it would be a purchase.
And then the property tax would increase based on the amount of land they have.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So right now we get no obviously taxes because it's our own, um, municipal property. Um, so if it was to go on to somebody else, if we were to sell the properties, uh, they then would be assessed. These assessments, obviously based on, um, the constraints and the features would have lower assessed values. Um, to be honest, some of them may even qualify for exemptions for, um, based on the uses. So it may not result in a, a lot of taxes, if any, depending, but.
My, my, for instance, uh, to a hundred acres, it's landlocked because of what it is, there's like the app of no value. The tax portion, that's where she's going with that one. Because I can think of that one specifically. I think that's one of the ones you're probably referring to.
Well, there's exemptions in the taxation side of things, right? So like there's managed forests and farms that are twenty five cents on their dollar. There's actually exemptions for wetlands that pay no tax. So some of these may fall into those because they're environmentally protected or things like that, that somebody can't develop them, they can't do anything with them. So they might fall in that exemption portion anyway.
And, and we could find this out like before we go through all the work of.
The exemption side?
Yeah.
We could ask MPAC to provide us, um, that information. They would go and obviously take a look, but, um, they could give us a good idea. Yeah.
So you did, good points. And I think there, there is some land there too of all that like we should be aware of what could be a benefit. I mean, there's that one that's, I believe it's number fifteen, it's in Nerrano, kind of to that corner, it's not really a developed a lot, but it, it's been talked about in previous council, but that could be a spot for a a small park land for that neighborhood and everything else that we you know, we could, we could just look at or residents are are acquiring more and more about a space like that too as well. There, there is the other one in, in that area too as well. It looks like it could be a lot that we could potentially uh, set up for a house too as well. So I, I mean, is that something that we want? Would, would, would be advantageous for us to be looking at to say, hey, I think the one that's in
Second Street?
Second Street? Yeah, I think, I mean, that's one that what would be the purpose of those? Not trying to put a house there.
It is, it is a small, but it is a serviced property and I'm looking at, is it number sixteen?
Yeah, that'd be sixteen, I guess, yeah.
I mean, it would, it would be small. I mean, someone would have to make it work. Um, but it's definitely has potential. The three that are highlighted in blue are the ones that could support development.
So do we, does, does council have any sort of? So does council have any sort of desire to give staff direction to look at, seeing if those are ones that we can potentially do something with to sell off or to get some development to them as well? That's something that looking at, like we did, if we did that, I mean, I'd be game four, especially with the blue ones. I mean, like to say, okay, like let's, we've narrowed it down and then to investigate to say, hey, could we possibly do that? So.
Yeah, I think. I have an idea too.
I mean, for, when they see the pickoff kind of idea, right? To see if there's an advantage there.
I have a question. Yeah, I just was noticing that one on Second Street is point one seven acres. And then we have one with frontage on Roger Stevens that is also point one seven acres, but the Roger Stevens one is indicated as not developable.
One's serviceable and one's non-serviceable.
But not that it's.
But almost still services.
I don't, I know there's.
But you're, you're correct. They're bigger lot. They can be smaller and have like water and sewer, but you need to have like bank ridge. So is that something that is council agreeable to? To look at the, especially the ones in blue and say, maybe get staff direction, say, to look at the three in blue? And we have also another agreement, which is fantastic. So, so I think that'd be great if we were to look at those three in blue and go with staff direction to see what we could possibly do with those.
So we'll come back.
We just need to go through the work on the yellow ones to like sell them to a neighboring landowner if it's going to be zero on the tax income. Because I imagine the paperwork is probably not insignificant to do something like that. So.
You would say the sale price and where I think it's valued at, there is a value to it. I gave somebody's, for instance, I'm just going to go around the top again. It's landlocked. If the person owns all the other acreage around it, it might be of value to him. Is there a value of the property? Is it a hundred thousand dollars or whatever? It's, it's not been the ox, because we can't use it. There's not no real purpose for it. So if we can get a hundred thousand dollars back in my new pocket. And yes, you were right, we would not get any tax money from it, but we'd be able to get some money for like versus a property like that, we might be able to reach out to some neighboring people and say, is there any in growth? If there's not, then you're probably, we can do it anyway.
And we, and we can avoid incurring any expenses by making a potential purchaser responsible for all of it, just like we would in a road closing. So legal fees and registration costs and what have you, so.
I think we have a pretty good agreement there as far as like, let's, let's, let's check out the blue ones and that's sort of like the easiest picking fruit right now, I guess, as far as like, you know, you don't necessarily own and, and then after we get through those in the next, whatever time frame, then we can bring it back and discuss a little more about the other ones as well.
So just for, so I will reach out to MPAC on in relation to the ones just in the, because we're already exempted. So just for example, item number six, the hundred and fifty acres, it's assessed at a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, but we're exempt because it's our property. So we can always ask them as well, based on the structure of that property, would it be potentially exempt from taxes from the use of a regular landowner as well, just based on it being, it may be fall into some of those categories because as itself, as a hundred and fifty acres, it has a value. But if it's significant wetland or wooded areas, it may fall under exemption. So I think so that I think maybe I'll just pick some of the bigger properties that we have and just see what they say about that as well. We'll bring that back.
Does it miss counsel? Do you need to, we're just gonna send a little more.
We're gonna call the auction.
We're just gonna put a good, we have that as information, but I think, but then there's some, so yeah.
Words.
What have you started?
Early, was it? Oh, yeah.
What have you started?
Start at four thirty.
Okay, four thirty.
And make sure.
What did he say?
Very bad.
I covered it.
That's, that's a perfect information to continue, everybody knows, so it's good. So we have, thanks, Ali, for doing that. And so, so moved by councillor Craftery and seconded by councillor Kenny. The council accepted update on township owned properties as information and that council directed staff to bring further report of the blue and yellow indicated properties to a future moment. All of there. That is curious. Does that look like Kirsten's anywhere? She's gonna talk with.
Okay, so in August, our report was brought to council with respect to an inquiry to close a small strip of land on Bristow. And council directed staff to proceed with the recommendation that was given. Now pursuant to the township's road closure policy, there are procedures that are required to be followed. One of those procedures is that notice is to be given to the public by placing an ad in the local newspaper or in accordance with notice provisions contained in the township's procedural bylaw. So in mid-September, as Ali mentioned earlier, we did receive notification that we would no longer be having a local community newspaper in my reporting. I had the phrase in the implications of this news and that pun was completely not intended. But it is kind of funny, it's to me, so I'll laugh inside. Are unknown at this point. We're still waiting to hear how this will impact municipalities with respect to public notice provisions. But with the respect to the road closure policy, council does have the ability to provide direction as to an appropriate method for providing notice for non-planning act matters. It's staff's opinion that the manner of notice should directly relate to the request and its impact on the community. In the case of the Hunt Road closing, the portion of land that's proposed to be closed, it's not a traveled road. It doesn't lead to water. It's not accessed by members of the public. In fact, I believe it's, it's vegetated and not utilized by anyone. So it's staff's opinion that a public notification that would be appropriate in the circumstance would be posting that notice on the township's website. The notice to be laminated and posted on the subject lands and that the notice would be sent by regular mail to all landowners within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject lands, which is all outlined in the road closure policy. So I guess I am looking for a direction from council to direct staff to proceed with the recommendation as given.
Thank you, Kirsten. I mean, it's just another step of the process of I mean, this came up in county actually, at our last meeting too as well. There was a road closure, we had to as well, and still looking for some of that direction from the process as well as what that, what that's going to look like with global media. So I think, I think we're all in that sort of game. I know, I think that makes sense. First, it was like, that's pretty well, we'll cover all of Bristow Drive, but.
I think I put a buffer map on there and I'm going to say maybe twelve landowners might be affected by that. But again, it's only adjacent to the Hunt property and the one next door. And that landowner's been consulted and they have no interest in participating in the process. So I would be doubtful if we received any pushback or objection from anyone, but we still need to follow them.
Yeah. Years is sort of, no, but that is the.
That's in the road closure policy, the one twenty.
Charity in there, right? So I mean, that all makes sense. So I, I, I'm not being silly. Any questions from council? Pretty straightforward, I guess. Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Kirsten. So moved by councillor Kenny and seconded by Reeve Jennings. I consider our staff, they were likely to listen attention to pass by law related to the closure and sale of block forty-five on plan eighty by posting a notice on the township's website and on the subject lands and by regular mail to landowners within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject lands. All of there. That's good. Thanks again, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Next up is gravel and Steve will talk about it.
Thank you, Deputy Ray. So the report for you is in regards to twenty-four maintenance stone award. So as you're aware, in the background, this council directed staff to proceed with twenty-four gravel tender. Thank you for that. We received phenomenal pricing from multiple different suppliers on this tender, actually. We have four submissions, which was great. We had Campbell's, Taco Berries, and a new one that we have never had in the past, is Collinsen. So that was a surprising one to have, unfortunately, it was non-compliant, but and then we had Kavanaugh as well. So kind of the three and then now four players that are bigger companies in this area have all submitted and it was great from staff to receive that. The low bid that was compliant was from Campbell Strucking, who we've worked with in the past. It came in at just around fourteen dollars per metric ton, which is in the municipal world, pretty well unheard of for that unit pricing. So it was a very aggressive one there behalf and even our second low bid was just right there as well. So it was really great to get this back. As noted in there, we're following the gravel maintenance plan. I've kind of tweaked it a little bit here and there, but it's consistent. After twenty twenty-four, every road in Montague that has been directed by staff to put gravel on will have received maintenance gravel. The only road that hasn't been included would be Elbona Road, which was brought forward to the previous council on minimum maintenance would be completed on that roadway. And it's about twenty-three kilometers of gravel roads is being completed every year. And now with code drive, we're down to point six kilometers. That's another addition there. As I put in there, just for information, there is some municipal is paying twenty-four dollars metric ton for gravel. So I mean, when you add that up over the twenty thousand ton we're putting down yearly, there's a lot of money that Montague residents are saving and putting into, back into their books. So it's it's great. This is a one-year contract with three additional one-year options. I laid it out in there how we will adjust these. And I have received twenty twenty-four pricing on every single road in Montague. So everything will be adjusted based on CPI for every year following this. So it's, I believe, we got probably the strongest pricing that we can receive and hopefully everyone stays as well. And we have a four-year plan that we're looking for. So staff's recommendation to move forward with Campbell Strucking. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve. I think that's, I mean, that's great. I mean, it's, it's, we just kind of go back a little bit, like this will be the, we'll be finishing up that four-year cycle that, and like for people to know, like, previous to that, our gravel budget was about a hundred thousand dollars and we were seeing some deficiencies in the roads. And I think we're starting to the problem is, is like, we started this process like four years ago to increase the amount and go through that process. It takes this long to get that decision to kind of go through the whole process and then we can start it all over again. I think we're going to start by round two, we're going to start to see more wins, like, correct me if I'm wrong, as we, as we go.
Yeah, exactly. So it's basically how it works. I mean, the longer you go with it, you can save about half an inch per year from snowplowing, from vehicular traffic. That's kind of your loss. So I mean, every forty years, we're pretty well putting back on what we're losing. Sometimes we're a bit ahead of that. But there are, again, some municipalities that have twenty-year gravel plans. So they're literally going into rock when they're creating a road. So, you know, Montague operators are really beneficial of council's direction and kind of forward thinking, trying to put my mind back into the gravel roads as well.
We're seeing, I think we're starting to see that turn, but and we have to stay, and we stay committed to this. If we're going to continue to see sort of that that continuous improvement as we go. But I think that's, I think that's great. All of it up to council. Any questions as far as I go?
I just, I think he's done a great report. It makes it pretty easy for council to see success going on and being planning to have this great idea. I think it's great to see.
Great. All right. Thanks, Steve. That's good. So that's going to be moved by Reeve Jennings and seconded by councillor Abath. The council awarded the contract twenty twenty-three PW eight, PW dash zero eight, the Campbell Strucking Limited for two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents, including the notice from Royal HSD. All of there. Here. See the money we're bringing up. Wait, where are we going to spend some of that? What do we save from here?
Thank you, Deputy Ray. This report for you is in regards to Rosero North Engineering. So it's got brought for a report to committee June twentieth. Just laying an option of where some of the savings from our capital program could be spent. And recently, we brought forward a report for the geotechnical. That was awarded to St. Lawrence Testing for sixty-nine hundred dollars. If you're on the road Thursday or Monday, you would have seen the drill out there. We started with our borrow holes already and we just be getting that report pretty shortly. And we received two submissions for our engineering. One was from Greer Galloway Group and the other was from a firm in Toronto. After Martin Consultants, they submitted a great proposal. Lots of detail, but unfortunately, they're obviously from Toronto, so surveying cost was very high for them. So that kind of put them out in the left field, kind of by themselves. And Greer Galloway had just as a spectacular proposal as well. And obviously, at the proposed award price of thirty thousand is, is a great price for the length of that roadway. So really looking at about thirty-six thousand dollars is what we're going to spend to get a full engineered report and geotechnical investigation back to us, which is again, great pricing. And this is all funded by the savings in our capital program. So staff's kind of laid out in the report our funding options. And that's kind of to be funded from the savings from the capital and if, if it would be funded from one of the reserves that would be brought before you, but it's anticipated we have what forty-nine thousand in savings in our capital in a while. When all capital.
Okay, and, and the, I mean, Ford and Kelly Jordan Mail, they look good. I mean, it looks nice, which is great to go through all of them. I think that's interesting that we're getting one from Toronto as well. Kind of makes me think that they're a little slower there maybe, and they're looking for some extra work too as well, which is, which is good to get some extra bids. But and you dealt with Greer Galloway, we did that with McLaughlin. They were great to deal with and obviously that road is looking pretty top notch. So that's pretty quality as far as that goes. And it's going to set us up like we discussed before, do a ball, but make sure to reiterate if people missed that is that hopefully it's going to help us with grant applications and money that is a road that we blunt, we can't afford to do. So we think this is, this is the great work in order to start the process so we can go after funding to get it, because we don't know when that funding could drop, right? Oh, thanks, Steve. I think that's great. I don't have any counsel of any questions at all. I think we're pretty straightforward, but I think we're perfect.
Said everyone.
Yeah, this is great. Thanks, Nancy. But I'm going anywhere. So moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Craftery, that staff be directed toward engineering services for Rosedale Road North, Greer Galloway Ruving Incorporated for a total of thirty thousand, four hundred and five dollars, eighty-nine cents, including non-revenue HSD. All of there. That's period. And Maguire Road, Steve.
Thank you, Deputy Ray, again. This report is just an update on our capital program for Maguire Road that was in the twenty twenty-three budget. So this has been something that's been in process for quite a while now. This finally been some progress that residents who are in Montague can actually see themselves, which I think is great that they're now seeing the hard work that staff has been putting into this, they're seeing the results and moving into the winters where the next results are showing for vehicles on top of that Lins Hill. There's been a pile of work that's went into the agreement, working with Hydro and the landowners surveying or everybody that's been involved in this has put in a lot of work on the landowner himself. Hydro and the survey company has been, great dialogue back and forth, and everybody's been trying to get this done as quickly as they, they can. And basically, just wanted to give you guys an update as, you know, we're coming to the end of our twenty-three season and there has been such a change in kind of what went on there. So as you can see in the pictures, we've widened out the poles and now they're going to be at the thirty-three feet limit. Bell still has to move their infrastructure. So once that is moved, those poles will be removed. And then we will start with sloping for excavation on the south side of the road. Coming into with Botherbro for next year, we'll be looking at removing some vegetation. And then again, that'll be on the north side. Once that's completed, we'll be doing the stone wall, excavation with that, ditching. And then when you look at the engineering that I put on, there's an attachment. It's all based on actual. Uh, it's all based on Ashto eighty, which is an American, but they have great standards on rural roads where. Some are, you look at a tack manual, it's very, um. It, it's very almost, I won't say over-engineered, but the cost of going to the tack eighty for that roadway. Would multiply this job, say, from a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project into the six hundred thousand dollar project. So that's why in consultation with the engineering firm, we went with actual eighty, which you can see is going to give phenomenal results. I mean, we are. Well, uh, creating a vertical reduction of one point five meters in that hill, which is phenomenal for our site lines, everything like that. This was the, the best design we could go with for the most, the. Uh, financially. This decision, so. Uh, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand is probably what the cost for everything here is, and that is if we subcontract that out, so. Again, I'll quit talking and if everything else is in the reports and, um, I'm very happy with what has gone so far.
I think this is a, a, a great update. It kind of let us know what's going on. Uh, I shared with you earlier that someone had stopped me in the grocery store, uh, a couple of weeks ago, or week ago, saying like. Thank you, it's nice to see that that's being done, so it's, and it seems kind of coming to fruition, but I think that's, I think that's fantastic, so. Uh, I discount somebody. Questions or comments again? How that is going pretty good, so. So yes, so Steve, I think that's uh. I think that's great. We're, we're moving forward with that. Something that was talked about, as we know, for many, many years in the past, and now we're, we're starting to hit the gas pedal for fantastic, so, but it's looking good, so. So moved by councillor Craftery and seconded by councillor Kenny. The council received where our safety and group's update for information, all in favor? That is carried. Goodness, Steve. Thanks for.
Thanks, council.
Thanks, Steve, that is, next up is uh our newly appointed deputy clerk, uh, Grace Francis, who is going to. Talk us about the uh, the road naming bylaw and the change of.
Yes, so that was kind of a joint report with Steve, um, going through. What the bylaws and just some housekeeping sort of things. We came across a few issues, um. The original bylaw from nineteen ninety-seven had. A few different road names. Kelly Jordan was just Kelly Road, Brown Road was Brownza Road, things like that. Um, a lot of the discrepancies had been fixed, except for Old Orchard. Obviously, this current staff has no idea why that was overlooked, but here we are. Um, so a couple of different options being presented to committee, um. Option number one would be to remain status quo, just leave the bylaw greeting Old Orchard Road. Um, this is not the recommended option. Everyone that lives on Old Orchard goes by Old Orchard Lane. Um, Canada Post considers it to be Old Orchard Lane, not Old Orchard Road, um. Things like that, uh, even our current green municipal sign, I think people know what road it is, it reads as Old Orchard Lane. Uh, Google Maps. Says Old Orchard Road, and then a little bit further, Old Orchard Lane, Old Orchard Road, Old Orchard Lane, so. To Google, it wouldn't really matter, but to everyone else, it's kind of a. A bit of an issue. Um, option number two would be to amend the bylaw, which is going to be the record, the recommended option, um. We're gonna be sending out a, a notification to landowners regardless. Just depending on what the wording's going to be, whether it's, hey, we need you to change all of your legal documents from Old Orchard Lane to Old Orchard Road. Or saying, hey, we made a bit of a mistake, this is what's going on. If you see us changing out your sign, it's actually to read what you guys already have written, um. Just kind of a, a courtesy thing. Uh, we're still gonna have to update M P A C, so that Municipal Connect is um updated for us. Mapping software, C G I S and the tax software, but those are all minimal changes in comparison and. Likely are going to have a lot less feedback from residents, so ultimately it's up to council. Financial implications are gonna vary based on what committee decides, but. Open to any questions and comments.
Thank you, Grace. So this is the time where I can look and now hammer you.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a very, uh, you know, contentious issue, so.
Absolutely.
Open up to councils to, uh, any comments or at all. I see none. Uh, it is gonna, it, 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 we took it easy on their first, it is gonna, it is gonna funny though, because I did, I was goofing around, I, I, if you pick an Old Orchard Lane and Old Orchard Road on the Google Maps, so Google Maps is confused. Because it, it'll, it'll bring you to both, and say, we don't know what they want to call it.
Yeah, exactly.
So I, and, and, and clearly it's a lane, it's not a road, because roads go somewhere, lanes don't. So, so it's a lane, so I, so I think that makes sense. But the sign that's there right now says lane though, right?
Yeah.
So we're not changing the sign.
If we go with option two, we got to.
Correct, I mean, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so, so right now.
Yeah.
Right now, our bylaw is really the only thing at our tax software and things like that. That's the only thing that's reading Old Orchard Road.
Tax software says both as well, I think, depending on who it is, but I think, so we're, we're recommending the least, the option that's gonna least affect the ratepayers. It's easier for us to amend our bylaw and for us to do the work in the background than to have everyone change their documentation.
And we're not gonna change it to Rowan, which is, it's not a legal name, so it makes sense, so.
You want so a lot of people. We go with option one.
Yeah.
And we'll get calling phone, phone.
Is anybody on council want to go with option one? So we have a council that does not want to take on it, so it's good, so, uh, so. I'm glad you agree. Moved by councillor Kenny and seconded by Reeve Jennings. The council direct staff to bring an amendment to bylaw twenty-three fifty-two dash nineteen ninety-seven to the Old Orchard Lane. To the October seventeen, twenty twenty-three council meeting, all of there? That is carried. Thank you, Miss Francis.
Thank you.
Your wonderful report. And our, I think our last. Okay, that was over here. Uh, so we just, uh, G O P B billing from Alison.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so we have received our twenty twenty-four annual billings statement. Uh, it's attached to this document along with the letter that we received. The O P B billing, it goes from July to July of each year. And same with the household counts. And uh, the reconciliation is normally two years, well, technically two years behind, but it's third of July. Um, we do have a slight increase based on the reconciliation from twenty twenty-two of fifty-three hundred dollars. Keeping in mind, we did see a reduction of almost thirty thousand dollars at least last year on our O B S, so, um. We, I have also included a, a chart from the last fifteen years of our leasing cost to show kind of those years where we had the really big increases. Um, and we've been relatively stable. A change of about seven thousand dollars is stable, um, for us. So it's not that it's anything significant. I just wanted to make sure the council at all, the documentation, this will be included in the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, we do go back through and whenever they do the property counts, because uh a full audit was done. When I was the treasurer back here in eighteen or nineteen, against their property counts and what we have, um. It does coincide with the amount of new build that we've had and things like that. Keeping in mind, um, the O P B billing, you could have one residential home, a granny suite and a house, and that's two policing costs, okay? So I did break that out on here on the assessment that's required just to cover the policing costs that the municipality is charged. Um, so if you have a unit that has two counts, so it could even be a residential home that has a small engine shop, so it has a financial aspect and a residential. There's two policing costs that we get charged for that property, so they'd have to have almost an eighty thousand dollar assessment just to cover the policing costs. And we do actually have a significant amount of properties that are assessed on, or even less. So, um, I just want that to be clear, so I think sometimes, um, the public doesn't realize what the impact is on their individual property. So, uh, I don't know if there's any questions from council, I think. In relation to this. Uh, I can answer, I'll try and answer anything that I can, um, in relation to the cost then.
Yeah, leasing is one of those ones that. It's the ability to pay, uh, it's kind of what you get, too, as well, like, as long as our, our numbers are accurate and everything, you had to, well, like, it's, it's, uh, it's obviously a service you need, they have that. Um, so that's sort of what that is gonna look like for us to, right? So I open up to get any, any questions as far as our leasing costs go? I don't think there is.
You're right. About to do, because I know we even like to change in the leasing, get prices from towns that follow through court, what do you feel? Well, I don't know, you could just. Yeah.
No, and, and it's reasonable for what it's, uh. For what? The service we get and, and, uh, and they do, and they do deal with a lot of, I mean, we've, we've seen at least in our area and what they're doing and, and, uh. And, you know, when they bring up the helicopters, it's like, you know, that's part of that cost and all that kind of stuff. As soon as they bring up that stuff, I mean, that, that basically, you need to pay extra for that, that would, that would. Big, that, that amount right there, it's something you can say, uh, it's a big value, so. Uh, no question was. So, um. This is moved by Reeve Jennings and seconded by councillor Abass. The council received a point one for annual building statement as information, all of there? Now we're asking of the, uh. The R V C, we, we, we kind of, uh, we talked about that a little bit earlier, so, but I can also just reiterate sort of like the recommendation for that, who was also paid away here.
Thank you, Chair. So this is, it was presented earlier by R V C A, the category three programs and services. It's um our recommendation based on the city of Ottawa, um. If they approve theirs, be ninety percent. Uh, responsible for the costing of the programs, uh, that upon them signing theirs, that we will bring out an agreement and bylaw forward to our council answering to be proven as well.
Any questions from that? I think. Kind of, you know, that didn't pay much, okay, that sounds good, all right. So, uh, moved by councillor Abbas and seconded by councillor Craftery, that council direct staff prepare a bylaw to enter into an agreement with Rio Valley Conservation Authority. For category three programs and services, once the city of Ottawa is committed to their portion of the economy, all in favor?
Bye.
I got you. That's carried, sorry. So we have no reports of committees with decisions, no notice motion or notice motions, any, no one finished business, and before we adjourn, do we have any burning questions from the audience or the online world? And Tom has a burning question.
Uh, when you're talking about the property that township owns. And you say some of those parcels are non-buildable on. Have you ever thought of selling them to hunters? Those hunters. You know, it was a wet swampy area, they hunt on it. You can't build a house on it, but a lot of them will buy property just for hunting.
I think. Yeah, and that's a great question. I think one of the, the hardest part is if it's, if it's completely landlocked by, how do, how does someone access that land if there's no way to access, so the landlocked ones, how, how would they access those lands? If there's, if there's, if, if they have to go through private property, they have to.
Well, in the hundreds, if they're interested in buying it, they could get an agreement with the next door property owner across the property.
And you're a hundred percent right, and I think, I think.
You know, I mean, it's just an option.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I, and I, I mean, I don't know if someone's a chip, I don't know, but I, I agree with you. I think that could be an option too as well, and I think, uh. From my perspective is, is if, like, we want to get through the, for staff time and everything else, we get through the, the easy picking ones first, and then I think. Maybe that's, but we can get into that discussion as far as what we can do with those properties, but that also, you know, we have to be.
Well, just, just look. In the future, if it's available, uh, if it's a viable option, it might work and might not.
I think it's a great.
I don't even know what the, where the properties are, but, but, you know, it's just, just an option, even though you can't build on it. Because there's a lot of property behind me, there's nobody built on it, but there's. Three different hunting camps back there.
There is, you're right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a great suggestion, so. All right, any other questions from online or, you know? All right. What's the, uh, sport of J's game?
They lost.
They lost.
It's over?
It's over.
On that, on that depressing note, uh. Uh, moved by councillor, we're gonna close up, I guess. Moved by councillor Craftery and seconded by councillor Kenny, uh. It's good, sorry, all right. Yeah, okay, okay. The, the committee of the whole meeting for October third, twenty twenty-three, the, uh, now be adjourned. At seven. Twenty-five. Yeah, all there?
Hi.
That is carried. Thank you, everyone, and uh, we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.